Did the poor status?
I'll go over that, I'll just talk to him.
I know you're gonna talk to him, I'll take it. To do that, I just wanted words up there, but I'm gonna go up and get my notes, if you wanted, okay. Yeah, somebody, I want to, just a second tonight, then they did it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey George.
She's got slideshows uploaded, you guys are probably gonna be working on this. You guys, I don't know, you know. We're, we're gonna wait. Yeah, this is, this is more than, this is. Working, working. Yes, I'm trying to. Oh.
Oh, you did make a pack.
Okay, um, they don't have all these uploaded yet, there's a few of the key packs, but that's.
Well, I already have these, yeah.
Oh, this, this is structured, that's structured.
And so I've been working, we got the kind of. You, you ready, so I'll.
I've got, yeah, I think we're.
So, uh, because this, uh, mission, uh, the book was talking about this, to begin with, uh, these are the charts. And, uh, and then, and then.
All the items that we will speak to today. So, staff and student safety, I wanted to share with the board that minor injuries occurred, those that were reported the day of the incident. I had shared, we did have a BPO get an injury on an arm through glass. And we believe we'll follow up and the principals following up, either a sprain or a break of a wrist at Eagle River High School, and it occurred in a locker room. The students were dressing, dressing down for a physical education class and were themselves in that locker room. And so, we believe the initial reports were just, you know, something was falling and stopped it. So, of the amount of people that we walk through our doors every day, that was a really good story. We also did have no baby, we confirmed it with Heather. At Fire Lake, we had a mom, I believe we were going into early labor, and no baby yet, so we are thankful for that. Unless, of course, she was just ready to have a baby. So, again, the Great Alaska Shakeout in October, the last couple of years, all of our schools participate. This has not been a voluntary PD or a voluntary event. The State of Alaska runs this. We sign up through deed every year. And not only, it's not only a school, the Great Alaska Shakeout, it is also businesses. It is a universal Alaska program, and our schools participate. It used to be where we could volunteer to do it or not, if we wanted to, and the last couple of years, there has been no choice. So, as of October 18th at 10:18, we can guarantee that every student in our schools practice earthquake drill. And they may have done another one since then, but we know on the Great Alaska Shakeout. So, that was a good thing, and I'm going to share a video so that you can see in an everyday classroom in a middle school what happened. And so, this picture, just to give you a sense, was, and we will release this to the media, we did get permission. This is a classroom, and you'll see that there isn't any instruction from the teacher, because the training is for kids with our alert, that everyone is alert, and that they do what they know. And it was being filmed, as you know, we don't have cameras in our classrooms. It just so happened to be a teacher who is furthering his career and had a UAA advisor, thank you, present filming his teaching and his work with students. And so, we have a great example. These students sense the earthquake, and they immediately go into action. You'll hear the teacher's instructions, you'll see calmness. We'll go out and get it started, and if the sound isn't so good, I'll try to translate, because we've watched this a couple of times. So, this is the teacher, Matthew, at Mears, is the teacher in the front of the classroom. Take a look at Alaska students in ASD.
Don't let yourself be convinced to do something that you know is bad, and then even follow the shirt.
Given instructions to cover your mouth with your shirt, just hold on, stay under there. A student wanted to know if school's canceled. He's going to ask them to take out their phones and text their parents. They asked what they should do, and they say, "We should wait for announcements, listen for, and wait for announcements."
If you do have a phone, you can go ahead and text your phone that you're okay, but we can be ready to listen to any directions that we need, okay?
Again, this is just by chance that we, and this teacher shared it with us, and was very proud of his class. Student says, "I want to go home," so there was fear.
Okay, I'm going to open the door here, but doesn't mean I'm not...
The teacher goes and gets his emergency bag while the students just get out. You see him there, the red bag. And ladies and gentlemen, that is what happens in our classrooms, and that's what our students, our students and staff are prepared. And again, this was, a teacher reached out to me last night, just said, you know, "Hope everything's clean, but I want you to know, we're trained, we know what we do." And new teacher at that. And so, again, I want to make it clear, we do not film our classrooms. This was a voluntary filming this teacher had for his own personal use and the university system, getting additional certification and for critiquing his own teaching, but as you can see, fabulous job. So, before I turn it over to Tom, I want to let our board know that, you know, we're monitoring social media and others, and there's things like, "Oh, my gosh, you're taking too long, what do you need more than five days? Why do you do this? Why isn't the board doing this way?" And I just want the board to know, we're very confident in our protocols and procedures. We set up incident command in this room immediately when it occurred, when we knew what was happening, and accounted for students within a couple of hours. Every kid, every child, every building, and that's over 4,000 classrooms. And so, we had the majority of students, we were under 20 students by 2 o'clock left in our buildings. By 4 o'clock, we had two students, and those two students had, their parents were first responders, so they couldn't get to us. We took care of students, they were in our safe care, we released them to their parents. So, as far as the process on Friday, we feel very confident, of course, with any, you can't, you never know what the next emergency is going to be, so you prepare and do your best. And we, just so the board knows, we always have after-action reviews and our processes, and so, all of these things are documented. We actually have people documenting every decision every time it was made, so that we are very cogent and deliberate in the systems, and wanted to share that with the board. To give a bigger picture, though, we are the second-largest physical plant in the State of Alaska. The reason that it takes time is because we don't, we don't have additional staff. The prior, the majority of our staff in the Anchorage School District are school people, not district people. And that's been deliberate by our board for many years. And so, the same people that are focusing on the learning, teaching how to read and doing middle school schedules are the same people that are responding to emergencies. So, thank you for allowing us to be able to switch our priorities, and this week's priority is what we're looking at, is just getting schools back online. But we have 92 buildings, I believe 87 of them, or 86?
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six are school facilities that we operate. We do have more schools, however, we have lots of rented space, and we're working with those landlords to prepare those, working with them. It's not just the landlord's responsibility that we make the final call about safety into buildings for our students. We have 4,000 teaching spaces, and that's estimated because we have multiple spaces for, two spaces for art classrooms, if you will. We have additional science classrooms and a science lab and a regular classroom. So, for 90 or 3,200 teachers, there's over 4,000 spaces, so band and others. We have to walk and observe every single one of those spaces. For us, a green light and a green tag is that it's safe and that the systems are taken care of, that Tom's going to talk about. It doesn't mean it's mission-ready to receive students. The square footage is almost 8 million square, square feet that we work through. And then, in the, so you know, in the last 48 hours, 64 schools and buildings have been entered in the ASD maintenance staff and observed by our engineers and staff and gone through a checklist to ensure, again, green tagging to us, and we'll define this, does not mean ready for teachers and students. It only means safe and secure with those primary facilities working and intact, as well as, as our risk manager will tell you, the debris removed and nothing else. Consequently, if another shake happened, that nothing new would come from the ceiling to the best of our knowledge. So, a lot of it is the removal of sharp objects and glass as well. That's why it is difficult to allow any staff, teachers into buildings, or students. So, we are going to, at this time, I am turning it over to the team that are deliberate. The technology infrastructure is Mike Fleckenstein, the capital infrastructure is Tom Roth, and the instructional infrastructure is Dr. Stock and Mike Graham. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Fleckenstein, who requested, he always wants to sit on the side, just like Mr. Johnson. We could have him move here too, if you want. He's always on the side. So, he's, if you've ever read one of the book, The Invisibles, the people doing the work right now in a school system are the invisibles, and we need to not ever forget that. There's actually a great book about the invisibles, and they make things happen. And our folks are making things happen. So, Ms...
Mr. Donnelly.
I just want to say, it's my military command control training, incident command for emergencies. It makes me want to build a team here with all levels of government.
Good afternoon. Thank you for just a moment to give you a quick update. I've got a video that will show our data center during the earthquake and how it sustained or didn't sustain any damage throughout the earthquake because of the way we designed it. And so, from the second the earthquake hit, all the way till now, we haven't been down from a central system at all. So, even complete power out, all of those things, we still delivered services where they needed to deliver. When we were doing the EOC and we were in this room, services worked just as they should across the district, and so, we didn't miss a beat. The only places that we missed a beat were in schools where things like water incidents happened and took out a whole technology closet, or a service provider that was providing connectivity to that school had an issue. And where we stand right now is, we have no schools that are completely down from a technology standpoint. We've got about 15 or 16 schools that we really do need to do some remediation to be able to deliver instruction. So, that planning is happening currently. In fact, there's a team back at Kennedy right now, putting those plans together that we will mobilize. As soon as a building is green, then we'll come around as a part of that infrastructure team and make sure schools and technology are ready at every site. And with that, I'm just going to show you a quick video. It'll be a little bit hard to see if somebody might grab the lights for us, because it's dim. It's shot in the dark at the beginning, because it's only motion-activated and the data center is most of the time lights out. And so, I'll show you a little bit of how this went. Those are the server, all the server racks, and you'll notice they're on what are called ISO bases. And so, they move independently of the, of the building. And so, power just lost, we're on UPS or uninterrupted power supply right there, so we still never missed a beat. And then, you're going to see a couple of guys come walking in in just a second, and the generator has already kicked on, and so, you'll notice there's lights in the hallway already, lights will come back on in the, in the data center in just a second. And each of those racks is on what is, what amounts to a giant steel ball and what is a, a big, what looks like a walk. So, as they, they float around in that walk, they go up and down, there are no rigid cords on any of those. Even the cooling, there's air conditioners in those racks, all of the cooling is flexible, and so, as you'll see, there's no damage in the, in the data center at all. Even our super fancy cardboard airflow control system on the right did not fail in this. And so, it worked out really well. Again, didn't miss a beat. Thank you.
And as we know, government systems, remember, Donnelly brought them up, and governance that large-scale systems are the brains of it, and the internal infrastructure is the technology. So, our student access to understanding about which students can go with which parents and parent phone numbers, and if you think about all the entire systems that we have, we are continuing to be able to read schools from a center base in regard to what servers are on, off, and infrastructure. So, this was a big win for us, that our data stayed secure, which is all student data, staff data, we can run payroll, we can, all those things that are behind the scenes have not been, have not been interfered. So, that's, that's a huge win, so a win for human resource and safety and a win for technology. We're going to move into where we really sustained some damage, which we're going to win, because we're going to have schools ready for students by Monday, and it's a very dynamic process. As I said, it's not everything the same, it's very individual. So, as soon as I, I'm going to share the state of the schools, and then we'll turn it over to the specific thing. So, this is just for a mind's eye, I believe, am I doing this part?
You're...
Okay, just communications, and I'm going to turn it over to Tom. So, I want to let the board know that under hot topics, we will have school-by-school pictures on our website, so that our community can access their own schools. And then, we also are putting out a strategic plan for community. We've been communicating at noon and 5 daily, and actually in between when Tom has additional information. We had to put out a few yesterday, because we had people showing up at buildings. And it is absolutely essential to allow operations and maintenance to do their job. And so, we shared that with our families, again, that the best place, and again, we have to ensure the safety of the people who enter it, and when they know someone's in, someone else wants to come in, and it's, it is literally very difficult for us to withstand that and face someone saying, "No, I'm sorry," when they see someone else do it. So, that was the additional communication yesterday. But we also are strategically sharing information that is definitely more detailed, definitely more planned with staff, and we have teams to do that, and it's very cogent and deliberate. And so, we ask that the board, when information goes out, that it isn't blackboarded out or social-meded out or anything, to allow very specific and deliberate information to people, because we just, you know, we think, "Oh, I heard this," and it might be true for one building, but it might not be for another. And our goal is to demonstrate to our community that we are ready and prepared, and that we don't want misinformation and any kind of goodwill to look like it is, that we're not organized. And, and that can happen, that happens with my own staff. We don't send out information until there is the go-no-go. And so, we asked that the board share that mission with us, because I believe we'll demonstrate competence here, but we also want to know from the board, what is it that you need from us, so that you can answer the thousands of people that are communicating with you? That's highly important. So, with that, the communications, again, those three places, we'll, we can answer individual questions. We'll start with the overview, and then we'll drive down into all the detail. Mr. Roth is going to take over here for facilities.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop.
Okay, video, okay. This is, again, to ground us, our mind's eye. Okay, somebody must have just made this today, because I didn't even see this. The water at hand, don't you? With the light fixtures in the water. And the idea that picking up the trash is one thing, but having a teacher be prepared when materials are damaged is another. This was our videographer on Friday. He was already out, ready to film kids in schools to, for our legislative items, and he caught this instead. Lots of broken glass, which makes the areas dangerous. Lots of our science lab have chemical cabinets as well, needed to be secured. A lot of these, this particular one, I believe it's the, the water on the second floor really caused the majority of the damage, the main breaks, the water breaks. So, that's great, I knew Robert had some video, he, Robert DeBerry is behind the scenes as well, and yeah, he works for us in communications, started about a month ago. Here's King Tech, if you notice, the bricks just came right off the wall. This is the kind of destruction that, why we need to postpone receiving students till But the video was, he was there to do a different job and experience the earthquake, and then just turned on his camera. So, thank you to him, I didn't know that he'd have that prepared today. So, I'm going to talk, turn it over to Tom Roth, and this building was used as our incident command center last Friday, and it was good. So, Tom, you want to share detail and then move on?
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. So, 8:29 in the morning, Friday, kind of, kind of, kind of turned our daily routine on its head. As the superintendent mentioned, you know, from, from that incident, you know, after a few minutes of trying to assess what was happening right here in the building, we assembled down into the boardroom and set up our incident command post. And Dr. Bishop's guidance, you know, to us was very clear first, that we establish our accountability and condition of our staff and students, and then that we would safely reconnect our students with, with our parents. And I would tell you, that was, that was a team effort throughout the district, and I think that went very well. Concurrent to that, we did have people go out as part of our SOP with the city. We did establish LNOs with the municipality and the Office of Emergency Management.
Do you know what those are?
Our liaison officers from the district. So, we were, we, we are, we are also very much integrated into the city's emergency response plan. So, we had folks there to ensure that, you know, they knew what resources the district had available, and also what the status of our schools and, and our personnel and students were. So, also, as a part of our SOP, what a lot of folks don't realize is, we establish a secondary emergency command post down at our, our maintenance operations building. Our senior director of maintenance and operations, Mr. Darren Hargraves, has a responsibility to organize a immediate recovery response plan. And our first task, while we were working this accountability and status of schools and students, our, our maintenance personnel and our capital planning and construction personnel were forming teams to go out to do what's called a rapid visual assessment of all of our schools. And they did that within the first 24 hours, really the 18 hours after the earthquake. So, the, the rapid visual inspection is an opportunity for folks, inform folks to get into the building, to take a look at the, at the interior, any, any interior damage, which could be structural, it could be component, like heating, ventilation, plumbing, those, those kinds of things, as well as a walk-through the exterior to see any indications of structural damage. So, this, this rapid visual assessment, or RBA as I'll call it, really informed the next morning. Yesterday morning, we assembled again down at the maintenance EOC with, with our term contractors and our jock contractors, who I would just like to state were great partners. They were asking us right, really, within minutes after the earthquake, you know, "What can we do to get with you to start working this recovery plan?" So, early Saturday morning, we convened at the maintenance operations center, gave guidance, and those teams now, they commenced and are now very much involved in a much more thorough interrogation of our school buildings and our facilities. So, so, you know, what, what does that, that mean? As you can imagine, every single building in the district was affected by the earthquake, some, some more so than others. And, and you can see from the, from the picture evidence that a lot of the damage that, that we're seeing involves ruptured pipes, ruptured pipes for boiler systems, a lot of tiles that were displaced and caused to fall, lighting fixtures that fell in the building, and you see the debris that was basically tossed in, in all the schools. So, so, the recovery process, in addition to this more involved interrogation, the recovery process has begun. So, what we are doing now, from a operation, you know, custodial standpoint, is we've begun this very deliberate but monumental task of cleaning, cleaning our buildings to, to allow for safe entry back into them, and I'll come back to that topic here momentarily. The, the other primary task, and we did this as a part of the, the initial walkthrough of buildings, was to first turn off gas, anything that presented an immediate threat to the structure and people, we mitigated those risks. So, now, we're in the process of restoring power, restoring water, restoring heat, and those necessary functions in buildings that allow us to do our normal classroom operations. And that, that is an ongoing effort and will be here over, over the next several days, and probably, to some extent, where we've seen buildings with major damage, we may be having to commission projects to actually repair where we've seen damage. Now, Dr. Bishop did, did talk a little bit about the green, amber, and red status of buildings. I, I just wanted to very briefly highlight, before, before our maintenance and operations team with, with, with input from our capital planners and our other contract staff, which is inclusive, of construction engineers, facility engineers, who can provide us those kinds of building assessments, we, we have really four steps to this, before we can declare a school safe or green, if you will, for reentry. So, the first is that the building is basically cleared of any debris or potential falling hazard by our, our operations staff. We don't want folks going into buildings where you have items that are dangling from ceilings and where there's large pools of standing water, glass, debris, et cetera. So, that, that's the first piece. It does not necessarily involve picking up books and putting things back into order in classrooms. It's, again, making the building safe for reentry. The second is that we, we have, we have water, and if we don't have water, we've at least turned the water off, that would allow safe entry and not have leaking, that we've got heat and power, and if, if, again, these systems are compromised, we have made those systems safe, that they're not a risk for... that they're not a risk for staff to reenter. We are in the process, and this is probably a more timely or time-intensive one, as a part of the RBA, we really triage buildings, for those buildings that demonstrated some potential risk of structural compromise, that those are the first schools that we are going to have engineers do a structural assessment of the building to confirm if we have reason to believe that they're compromised, to confirm yes or no, whether they agree with that assessment. And then lastly, that, you know, we have a functioning sprinkler system and functioning fire alarms, really the components, the safety components in the building. So, those are the real four components that we use to make this determination whether a school is safe for reentry or green. Again, to Dr. Bishop's point, it doesn't mean that the school is mission-ready. So, yesterday, we did get a chance to go into 64 schools. A lot of this, again, it's a continuous feed of information, so even though we got into that number of schools, we do not have that number of schools where we have an evaluation that's been provided. As of now, we have six elementary schools in the district that have been determined to be green, green for reentry by staff to commence recovery. And Dr. Stock will talk to the district's plan to do that. This number of buildings, I would submit to you, will increase significantly over time. Again, it takes a bit of time to get through these buildings to make these kinds of evaluations. We have five schools now that are in an amber status. And amber status is that we have buildings that have compromised components, maybe the heat exchanger is separated from the HVAC system, or we've got significant leaks that we're working, pipes, water isn't running. But we think the amber schools, given focus, will be available to support education on the 10th of December. We have three schools which we have classified or tagged as red. These schools, right now, our belief is that they will not be available for the district to use on the 10th of December. What the staff is working now, Mr. Graham, Dr. Stock, and their subordinates with support people, for those schools that we know or are very confident will not be available, we are working contingency plans to ensure that, one, we are taking care of staff and students, but that we are able to continue education for those populations in our schools that are determined to be ready to receive students. So, I'll pause to answer any questions.
Mr. Donnelly.
Mr. Roth, what are the three schools that are red?
If I might, through the president, I would prefer that we not talk to that right now. I think there probably is a communication that needs to happen with the impacted principals, and it's not just the principals of those schools, but it's also the principals of the potential gaining schools, that we have a plan before this gets communicated. And we're not trying to hide information, but we want to ensure that when we present it, what we're presenting is not just a problem, but the problem with a solution to it. So, I'm gonna hold off. I'm happy to talk with you separately on that, but for right now, I prefer not to discuss that in this forum.
Are there any other questions, comments? Mr. Stock.
Madam President, I'd just like to also say, it's also good to remind everyone that a school that we currently think is yellow could become red tomorrow if a gas leak were to expand, or some other thing would happen, or some that we might think are red. I mean, there was one today, about an hour ago, that we thought of as red, and now we think it might be yellow. So, I mean, for us to get a pretty firm idea on that, it'd be good if we knew that with some degree of competence. Our first initial look is the ones that Tom's referring to.
Correct. And tomorrow morning, we will have these communicated to principals which schools are turning green and moving forward. And again, it isn't about, you know, letting the board know, it's really, when we do announce, we want the plan, and they aren't yet finished. So, we need the plan for, because once the board knows, it travels quickly, and we want to ensure that we communicate that plan to our families as well, and our teachers, and not cause any undue stress.
So, this is kind of down the road, but I know these questions will be asked, will we be extending the school year?
Madam President, we can extend the school year, but we also were permitted five days to be able to. We have two days built into, and the commissioner can talk about that, already we have two days built into our schedule. So, the statutory requirements are 170 school days, we have 172 built in. So, Monday through, Monday and Tuesday, we immediately took those days knowing, those initial assessments of the walkthroughs of just turning off the primary power and water, we knew by, probably about noon on Friday, that we weren't gonna have school Monday, Tuesday, and we waited just for that kind of guarantee about the extent of the damage, and then we went ahead and made that call. But our commissioner, right away, just so you know, picked up the phone when we called, and I can have him speak to this.
So, if I can just real quick say, I'm in awe of your students, your administration, your staff, your families, I'm just in awe, and so it's very humbling to be at this table. It's not that I don't wanna be at this table, it's very humbling, but I don't wanna communicate in any way that I'm here because there's anything at all lacking in your district's response. It has been absolutely wonderful, and I know you're proud of your folks, and I'm just in awe. So, thank you for the opportunity to be here, and thanks for inviting me up. So, in addition to what Dr. Bishop has said, and I so appreciate she, right away soon, I think she must have text, we were texting about 30 seconds before the earthquake.
Yeah.
And then the earthquake hit, and I was hoping she was still on the other end somewhere, and she communicated very quickly. But I can substitute some of your calendar days for an emergency closure day, so it eliminates the need to actually extend the school year. But that's really your decision as a board, as recommended by your superintendent, of what you want your calendar to look like. And I'm here to support you, to make sure that we're out of the way, and we're here to respond to those inquiries from Dr. Bishop. But I can substitute those days, so it's not an add-on to your calendar.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam President, I'm sure every student wants to know.
Yeah. Well, that's just a question, just waiting to be asked, so.
And some of those considerations in the bigger picture, if you think about it, are graduations, and requirements, and family travel. We, in a given year, have over 2,000 graduations, and then parents with tickets and stuff. So, we're keeping all this in mind, but the flexibility that our state has allowed us, the governor-elect, as well as Mr. Dr. Johnson, have really assisted in this process.
And we thank you.
And with that, we'll continue with this, and then go back and revisit the board's questions, because of course, your guidance is essential for this as well. So, thank you, Member Donnelly, for that question. And let's move on to, once buildings are set, what does this look like organizationally for our primary mission? Actually, it's secondary after safety, but it's what we're a school district for, is to educate kids. Can you share that, Dr. Stock?
Yes, thank you, Superintendent. So, obviously, instructionally, our very first mission has been covered really well, Friday, when it happened, the very first training that's, we're instructionally trained in, is what to do in an emergency, and so you saw evidence of that in action. So, that was our first, this place right here turned into a command center. You can still see the whiteboards in the back of the room. They divided into phone banks, elementary, secondary, directors, everybody was got tasks, everybody, we brought out the analog phones when everything goes wired on our internet, voice-over internet protocol for the phones. First thing goes down when internet's out, had the old-school phones all plugged in here, everybody had phone banks. First thing you can do, and you can still see the back of the whiteboard in the back, was to do the check-in from every school on safety. And so, that went on through the morning, and updates kept coming in.
Madam President, I hate to interrupt you, Dr. Stock, but just, I don't even know if this is being broadcast or not, but if the public was out there, I think it's important to explain what you mentioned about the analog phones, because this board had talked about that last year, to make sure that all our schools had an analog phone in case of an earthquake that knocked down the internet phone system that we also had.
Well, even though Mr. Fleckenstein's well-known for his progressive thinking on technology, he won't let any of the old-school stuff go away, just in case. So, we had sacks of phones that came right out of the emergency closet, they were plugged in, we plugged those in and started up on, so we could get multiple phones going, and had banks going, and those were all being logged in. Mike led the team that was doing that, and those things all came in, and we just kept checking them off and doing the check-ins for student safety. When the last student, when we were down to the last two, we knew they were safe. At that point, we took a break, and around 3:30, we brought the whole team in here together, and there was a debriefing where we walked through next steps and started making our next plan. So, there's three phases when something like this happens on the instructional side of the house. The first phase is over, which is safety and security. It fits one of the Alaska commitments that the state of Alaska has worked on, safety and well-being is one of the state's three main initiatives for this year for all school boards in Alaska, and that safety and security piece was a key part of that. The second one was responsible and reflective learners, which is another state of reflection and commitment. And what you saw there on the videos were examples of students helping one another and keeping each other safe, and so feel good about how all that ties together. So, that's phase one. Phase two is where we're at right now. That is a full-blown inventory, and it starts with the facilities inventory, and that will be ongoing over time. And as these schools come online with going from red to yellow to green facility-wise, as soon as the protocol works like this, as soon as Tom's team says that school's green, it's ready, it's safe to have somebody in the building. At that point, Mike and his team gets deployed, principals will step into the next phase. So, that phase starts on Monday, and Monday, the elementary and secondary leadership are scheduling, have scheduled a meeting at 11 o'clock with all principals. They will come together and get briefed, and that briefing includes a set of protocols that will happen as a school is now safe. And so, the first step is that principal's meeting. The next step, then, is some form of what we call retrieval, which is staff who don't have an emergency medical issue but have left car keys, or phones, or things where they must get in and retrieve things. Principals will be announcing a time and a location for staff to come in and do, it's not time to work, they're just, it's optional, but they can get in and out of those buildings and get retrieve items. There will also then be an announcement at that school through the principal that there will be a community retrieval time. If there are things that community members, or volunteers, or students left in the schools, they will have a process for that. So, that's the second part of that. Then the third part is the actual workday. Once we've done that, then when staff is cleared to come into the building and work, the principals will announce that, and they have a protocol they've developed that will, they will put into place, it's already built, and it starts with processing with the faculty in a meeting, is what happened Friday. They'll do some, you know, everything from emotional work over dealing with what happened to also an after-action review of Friday's emergency, talk through all of those things. And at that point, then, there'll be an assessment checklist that has been partially developed right now, but Instructional Division is building that. And that's where, before we can say we're mission-ready, and we're ready for school, that's where, it may be ready facility-wise, but now we need to be ready instructionally. So, there will be a checklist, that first workday, teachers will spend the time going through their list, okay, my projector, my computer, my textbooks, my materials, and they'll fill out furniture, you know, chairs, legs, and so, facilities is handling the big stuff, we have to go in and handle the instructional stuff. So, they'll have a report that they submit to their principal that shows whether or not their classroom is instructionally ready, and whether or not there's alternatives that can be done. If I don't have enough textbooks, what's the plan? You know, can we have school, and we can share, what's the plan? So, that's what the principals have to go through. So, that's the third step, and the thing, I think, for the board and the community to just understand the patience and grace we need, is that those schools are gonna be coming online, not all at the same time. So, there's so many green, you know, schools, now they can get in, but maybe they're okay for safety to be in the building, but the principal and the administrative team at the elementary division and secondary have not said, this school is ready for students. And so, there's an internal checklist that they have to cover to say, this school is now mission-ready. So, think of it as red, yellow, green, and mission-ready. We're ready for students. And so, that's where the Instructional Division is. So, that's our plan. It's open to, obviously, changes as we go, but there's still lots and lots of details to work out, and the team is working on those. Some of them are upstairs working as we speak, trying to put those checklists and plans together.
And Dr. Stock, as a reminder, for those schools that are red-tagged, we still will have instructional, educational plans for students, and most likely, it would be relocation to other areas, it might be some blended learning models. So, those are in the works now, but we need to have a firmer understanding from the building side, but those are the ones that are working on the most now, because the goal is to get the majority of them green, and deal with the fewest amount of rents as we need to, and then really do the real work with that. So, it's not that, so those staffs will also have meetings and will be updated, even though it's not in their own building.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Hilding?
Mines on insurance and funding, are we gonna, I imagine we're gonna get to that.
Yes, ma'am. That was a great segue. I think the next slide is financial implications. So, I'm gonna turn this over. I know he didn't join us at the table, but maybe Jim, I can move over. Oh, Dr. Stock has a seat to his left. And actually, Mr. Vekalis, if you'd like to come forward in regard to questions in the bigger picture of the city, as well as ASD, just in case.
So, the first thing we did, actually, by about noon on Friday, was establish new account keys for all object codes, that means personnel, benefits, supplies, equipment, all of the major categories, so we could start accounting for all expenses related purely to earthquake damage and/or repair. And we've been using it all weekend with maintenance, capital plans, and everyone else who's been out to the schools. We recognize this is gonna be several months. Months from now, if something pops up that we can validate as earthquake damage, that was the intent of establishing it early and getting it out. IT put together an automated message and went to all IFIS users, and I sent one out to all the leadership. So, there's a lot of paperwork on top of that, and I'll be getting together with my team tomorrow, and we'll make sure that all documentation requirements are sent to the locations where it's required. We actually have copies of all of it in the emergency operations cabinet, so we had pre-planned for this, and it really is a matter of record-keeping. We know the president has announced a national disaster, so a little bit premature to know how much is gonna be made available, what the percent reimbursement rates may or may not be on any different categories, and we'll be working through, with that through the week. I called the munis, municipal emergency management operations yesterday, obviously, they were still spinning up as well, so tomorrow I'll spend some time over there. George Vekalis has some extensive experience with dealing with prior incidents where money was reimbursed through FEMA, so naturally, he will mentor me and my staff as well through this process. It won't be once a metal, it'll be periodic, it will get rolled up at the municipality, and then reimbursements will start. But frankly, initially, it will come out of fund balance as we start moving things and kicking it off, and I'll make sure we have a and kicking it off, and I'll make sure we have a good method of informing the board as to how much those initial costs are. I mean, quite honestly, that is the true and single-most purpose of a fund balance, always has, always will be. It was to be prepared for any emergency that would happen. The board has been adamant, as far as I can tell, for about a decade or so, at keeping that fund balance as close to 10% as possible, and quite honestly, that paid off for us. We have the flexibility to start the process. Clearly, Tom has lead on what the actions are, and I'm more in a support role on this. But fortunately, we are, we do have a 10% fund balance, we do have flexibility, we can start moving forward, and we already have, and at this time, I don't really have any concerns.
With our CFO and actually our CEO's training, I'm very confident that we're gonna get there. Both of these gentlemen have led through wars, major emergencies, as well as logistics, financial logistics for big services, so I think we're pretty fortunate to have them on our team. The next slides are really just about questions. We want to ensure that we've answered your questions adequately, that we are, you may hear directly from community, many of you do, as your folks reach out to you, and we want to, the board, you've given us great direction, you've given us resources needed to operate, and we want to know how we might support you in being able to answer to your, you know, community, our constituents, to feel that you can share with them that administration has this, or who to contact, we want to ensure that you know the direction forward, that you feel confident that your communication to individuals who might ask about detailed information can be redirected, and you know who to redirect it to and whatnot, and just any other questions that we have, that we'd love to be able to work with you, and we're your team, so let us know. And I'll turn back over to you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Board members, any, Ms. Hilding?
Thank you, and as far as for a board member need, I think the communication's been excellent from a mom and a board member, and I couldn't thank you enough for how clearly you've done that. It makes it very easy for me to say, just go to the district website, and there's no questions once you get there, and the information's all ready and available, the emails and texts to check your email have been excellent as well. On the funding, and maybe George can talk about it, but I'm curious on how long the process is to get reimbursed, I'm concerned about, you know, we have a fund balance, but the extent of the damage, I imagine, will be larger than the fund balance, and I don't want to get wrong side up on that. And then, any plans to welcome our national representatives, our senator and representative into our building, so they can see the extent and the need and properly communicate that? So, any plans on that?
Thank you for the question, questions. First of all, the most important thing, and the staff is doing that, and that's documenting. And they're documenting it, just as Jim had portrayed, they're also, they have numerous pictures of the schools. That's extremely important. The other thing, too, is that, you know, FEMA is your backup. Obviously, the expectation is that most entities will use their insurance or insurance carriers, and then FEMA, you know, will come in and assist where they can. It's never 100% reimbursement, but depending on the urgency, depending on the nature of the requirements, then FEMA does actually come in with quite a bit. What the district's piece of this is to be a part of the roll-up for the municipality of anchors as a whole, because usually, communities submit as a community. And so, the district's portion would go to the city, the city would roll that in with the other requirements for FEMA assistance, and then that would be presented to FEMA. It does take some time before, you know, final reimbursement occurs. There are some entities that are able to go ahead and provide money upfront if the urgency is such that there's just not enough money to make something happen right away. But in our particular case, I'm not so sure that that would be the need. I think the district has a wherewithal.
We also, Deb Ingles as well, I know, and Jim can speak to insurance, but our risk manager, she, it wasn't noon, and she already had Seattle on the line. So, they were aware, they know of our situation, and specific actual schools that were damaged more than others. And the schools that, you can imagine, are the most damaged were the ones that we evacuated students, and those were posted on our website. So, think about when we had to remove students immediately from a building, that was because we weren't certain of the safety. And so, those buildings are the most damaged at this point of what we knew then, and, but literally, they are changing daily, because, you know, now, as we get information about the grounds around the school, so not only in the school, but around the school as well. So, I'll turn that to Jim about insurance, but Deb's part of our incident command, and Jim's is this financial insurance piece.
I can clarify the insurance. The insurance isn't for the structures of the building damaged by the earthquakes. What the insurance will cover in this specific case is anything damaged by fire or water. So, all of the broken sprinkler systems, all of the leaks, all of the other stuff that may have damaged something, that's what our insurance piece will cover. Deb, true to everything she does in informing people, sent multiple messages, more than once a day, to all contractors to make sure everybody going into a building understood that they had to take pictures and annotate and categorize what appeared to be water damage from any liquid source. So, I feel quite confident, having had those messages also spread through maintenance and capital plans. It will also be given to the school leadership and the teachers when they go back into their classrooms, as a reminder to catalog what was water damage. That will be worked separate from the other rebuilding component.
And if I might add, just another piece. So, I do want to assure the board that you have a group of tremendous professionals that are very cognizant of costs, and to Mr. Vekalis's point, you know, everything is being documented, recorded, both through documents and photography. But the guidance I've given to my staff, and through them to our contractors, is that the imperative for us is to get our schools back online and safe. So, while I would tell you that they are using good judgment, what I, I don't want them, and I tried to make this clear, I don't want them not doing something that they know that they can do and should do because of consideration or concern with funding. I mean, as Jim has said, I think we're okay. And if there are things that they think are significant that we should know, that they have the wherewithal and the professional cognizance to let us know, to make informed decisions, but right now, again, they're working hard to get our schools ready for Monday.
And I want to share, just to give a mind's eye, so Tom Finisef and Darren Hargreaves were in our meeting this morning when we met, and just the care that's going into it when they go into a room that just looks like a disaster, there are personal items. As they're cleaning up, the major items falling from the ceilings and whatnot, there's boxes with labels of which classroom it's from, personal items, whether it's keys, or purses, or cellphones, depositing them in that box, closing it, putting it in the hallway for the cleanup, putting it back in. So, there's really down to the detail of systems about how do we handle the stuff. Really, I was impressed with the detailed knowledge, and just made me feel that I was able to then articulate that to the questions that I get in regard to our maintenance and custodians that are out there, helping support these classrooms, because we want, when our staff comes back, we want to have that be a reassurance that we're gonna take care of them, we're supporting them, because we know if we take care of our staff and support our staff, they're the ones taking care of our babies, and then they'll support, they'll be better set to support students. It's a really good system there, but I wanted to just share that piece, because his explanation to the instructional side about this is what we're doing, this allows them to then go to their instructional side people and principals who run those schools, to be able to, you know, both capital and the instructional side, working closely, to have folks feel good about the work being done.
Before we move on, I want to check, Andy's on the phone, Mr. Holloman. Andy, do you have any questions?
I'd also like to, also just reiterate, board member Hildy's comments, I am very, very grateful for the work that, you know, happened on Friday, when I had to go find my kids, and being able to put my hands on my kids was just amazing. And so, I am really appreciative of everything that's been done. I'm appreciative of all the communication, as a mom and as a board member. I'm also very mindful that we are only three days out, and there's, information can only come out so fast, and I'm just really cognizant of that. And so, while I know I have a bunch of questions, I know that some of these things take time, and I want to just recognize as a board, speaking for myself as a board member, that I want to know from the administration, what do you guys need from us in our role? Do you need, whether it's approval for funding, whether it's, you know, board policy, you know, to set aside things so that you guys can get your job done? How do we help as a board in our role and our function to be able to help you? So, that's one of my questions, and then I also had another one on some of our facility questions as well. But I just wanted to start there first, and then I'll do one follow-up.
Thank you, Member Silling, and through the president. I'm gonna have the facility questions that you go into detail with Tom, but the communication piece is, and just the deliberate succinct going out, because once we announce something, then everybody's gonna want to know answers. And so, we've been thinking three steps ahead and being able to release, we feel, you know, our community does have the right to know, know what, when we know. And so, things that are not certain yet, until I get a final report, I prefer not to release that, because I don't want anyone to be worried without any intention, you know, that, to scare folks. So, I appreciate, if, just similar to how the board processes go, if we found up questions, you know, through the president, to the person, if you just CC, we already have that in policy. As we respond, we'll respond to all. When, I mean, through your own policy, when one board member goes out and has then this information, it puts the entire board in a spot, because someone else wouldn't have that information. So, you operate as a unit, and if you share those through the president and then through Katie, then that information then can go back out in that same manner, because I know, I've seen the pushback from the community, "How come you're not here?", "What are you not here?", "What do you know?". And if they really, that's why I wanted to provide the board, given that it is just time, just the significance of this in our buildings, and really, I know some of them are simply the, "What about asbestos in our older buildings if it moved?", and "What about mold and this and that?". And so, we're gonna share detail, because once we say something, and it's like, "Well, what about the ...", you know, and so, we have a plan for those, and we're gonna just cogently and professionally answer those for you, but at the same time, we understand your spot in this, that you're in those, as an elected official. You know, please share, and our system and your policy works, that you have a superintendent that can, you know, take care of those things, and I want to do what the board expects of me. It's difficult when, for me, then, I communicate with the teams of hundreds of people through here, and so, just having everything aligned is very, very important on our side, and we want to answer the questions, but we want to be sure that those answers are number one, correct, we want to be absolutely accurate, and then we don't want to leave them with a problem without a solution. And so, we'll work on those as well. But we're doing our best, and, you know, we learn every time that we communicate in regard to doing our best to get as much information as we can out as quickly as we can in an expected format. So, we're choosing that noon and four, because that coincides with the 24-hour work that Tom's crew is doing, and then when I'm updated in the morning. And honestly, it wasn't until this morning, when we had some additional updates, and just word from the field that this, keeping kids out two more days than expected is the right thing to do because of staff. It truly is about having our staff feel confident to receive our children, and we need time to not only process the mess, we need time to think about instruction, but our staff need time to debrief and to come together as a team as well, emotionally and physically, and to be able to do their job. And so, it really, truly, if we expect, you know, 48,000 kids to be taken care of, taking care of those staff needs that we've heard are also essential. So, I appreciate the question, and, but I think the system that you guys have is workable if we work it.
Okay, I just had one follow-up question. I believe we have, and I don't remember if it's 20 or 22 facilities that are designated or labeled as like emergency shelters or structures, were those prioritized in any way to be inspected first? And I know we didn't have to utilize them that way. And out of those 20 or 22, how did they fare if we needed to use them? And whether that question can be completely answered right now, or if there's a, you know, something learned over the next week?
So, thank you for the question through the president. So, I would say, to answer your first question, we did not separate those schools out as a priority over other schools in terms of our rapid visual assessments. And the reason being is the feedback that we were getting from the municipality was that the need for shelter sites was not gonna be as great as we had planned. So, we did not separate those out, and to get to your question, in the schools that are shelter sites, we did find problems. I mean, again, all schools had issues, but, you know, the types of problems we're talking about were power outages, leaks, those kinds of things that, had they been used as shelter sites, it probably would have taken at least 24 to 48 hours to get them ready, if they were in fact, you know, able to be readied, for them to be used as shelter sites. We did, just a real quick side to that, we did offer to the city that we have the 22 shelter containers that have emergency equipment that could be provided, and that, you know, and we remain prepared to move those shelters wherever the city needs them.
And at this time, Andy, I know you have a question.
Actually, I kind of answered a lot of the questions. I do apologize if I'm being able to be clear. So, I do want to say that 100% feedback has shot in people, has been positive about the way Friday was handled and everything since. And, yeah, we'll do our part in communicating to people how big of a job the administration has in front of it, and it's good thing, backup, but thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Anyone else? Ms. Vekalis? Yes. Mr. Donley?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. First of all, did we experience any gas issues, natural gas leaks?
I can't speak to the magnitude of the buildings that did have reports of smelling natural gas, but again, within the first 18 hours, as we did these rapid visual, we did turn off gas, and in those examples where we did get reports, that was relayed to maintenance, and that was a priority, that was a first priority if we were smelling gas because of the explosive hazard.
And so, I trust your team, I know you're professionals, and so, I suppose if you had to turn off the gas and the gas was the source of heat, that you've got something in there as an alternative form of heat to prevent freezing up and getting additional damage?
No. I mean, to be quite honest with you, that was a risk that we understood going into it, and luckily for us, you know, the temperatures have not really been extremely cold, so that could have been much more problematic, but I think the more immediate hazard would have been the explosive hazard. And I can risk pipes rupturing more so than having a building explode.
I completely agree with that, I just want to try to minimize property damage if there was a potential freeze-ups. Since we just last meeting, our special meeting, we resolved the bond proposal for 2019, and we were under some time- resolved the bond proposal for 2019, and we were under some time limitations, legal time limitations in doing so, I'm wondering what kind of options we have for modifying our 2019 bond proposal to possibly address some of these new quake-related concerns that were raised financially.
And that's a great, that's a great comment and observation. And when, when the adrenaline kind of subsided after the first day, that was one of the, the things that I also thought too, that perhaps, you know, we, one, may have schools with much greater need, and two, because of potential damages to schools, what we thought would be good projects maybe are made moot. So I, I think, to remember Donnelly's question, we really need to go back, one, and get some guidance from the state as well as from the city. How, how do we look in, in the broader context of the state declaration of emergency, the federal, the FEMA funding, you know, how, how this all shakes out? To be sure we have need, you know, some of these needs may be resolved through federal and state dollars as opposed to municipal taxpayers picking up the tab. We got to do that. And I think it also impacts our six-year plan, not just this, this 2019 bond.
So as a board member, Superintendent Bishop, things that I'd be very interested in is some sort of legal opinion about us modifying the bond proposition to give more leeway to the district and how funds are used? Since there's this great uncertainty, we, we're just not going to know the highest and best needs for money at that time. So my first question would be, if for an emergency situation, what kind of leeway would bond council give us for being less specific about the particular buildings identified and projects identified in a bond proposition? I've got to think there's some flexibility out there under the law for earthquakes. Second, how that would impact the availability of those funds to be reimbursed at a later time? Because we know there seems to also be a lot of flexibility by the federal government and by the state, that if we move forward with things we might need at that time, the state's been very generous later, and if it's identified, it's actually been higher on the list than it was at that time. They've stepped in and reimbursed us for those costs that we would have been normally entitled to. And I'd like to, I'd like to know more about that in an earthquake situation.
You're absolutely correct. And you're speaking to the former prior earthquake that did some damage at ROMIG. And that, the district did that work and we were later reimbursed. So on the CIP from the state. I'm glad that you did invite the Commissioner to the table because many of those rules that the bond council follows are statutory and rather maybe even regulation at deed. And so we have the person that can influence those items for us. We'll work with our attorney as well as deed and their attorneys to, to get those answers. But those are excellent questions. And the gentleman in front of you is the one who's going to assist us, I'm sure. But you're correct. We did get reimbursed for ROMIG, prior earthquake damage. Thank you.
So Commissioner, I don't want to expose our taxpayers to not getting reimbursed for something that they would normally be reimbursed for if we didn't fix it right away. But at the same time, if we need to fix our schools right away, we certainly appreciate some leeway in that area.
Yeah. Thank you through the Chair. Sorry.
There you go. Okay, thank you. Through the Board President. So I don't have a complete full answer for you today. Before I left, what is today, Sunday, Friday, before I left to come up here, I instructed our facilities folks, I think they've been in touch with Tom.
Yeah, we do have Larry Morris here on the ground.
And we sent one of our folks up just to be here to support. But they're looking into how we can maximize every bit of flexibility we can. As you did the bond things, we just released our major maintenance and school construction list just a couple of weeks ago. I imagine that the priority of those could adjust. And so they're looking into how we do all those things. Just know that we are here to support, to get out of the way and to support you and Dr. Bishop in making sure kids have a safe place to go to school.
I had one more thing.
If I could ask a question on that topic though. Can we postpone submitting our bond proposal?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Oh, is it? Okay. Have we asked them?
Madam President, we're working on that. Yeah, they're also in the middle of their incident command, so it's not present. But understanding if I might, because I, several questions came from the board to me personally in, in regard to a section that instruction handled, Dr. Stock and Mike Graham. And I was wondering if you could speak a little bit, Mike, to volunteers so that we understand, because our, our public, we have quite a few different entities coming forward from rotaries, Boy Scout troops, just, just tons of folks that really are ready and waiting to come and help. And, and Mike can speak that out.
Thanks. That's one of the things we did talk about this morning briefly as we're going through things. I know that the board has been receiving lots of, lots of that. Some of us have as well, as well as principals getting calls. We kind of categorize it in a couple of different things. We've got our parents who are volunteers who come in very often, who may want to come in and help, as well as those other kind of organizations, the various clubs and organizations out there. One of the things we talked about is that it's going to be important that the first day, the first teacher work day, where they're really coming in and doing assessments, that Dr. Stock talked about, we have some checklists for what they need to see, what, what's damaged, what do they have? And they begin that first section. Probably not having a lot of volunteers in there on that day. As we, before they start moving things about and resetting up, we need to make sure we know they've looked at the curriculum, they've looked at the, the things in their, in their classroom. But on that, at the time that second day begins, for the, when the teacher's second work day, there probably is a lot of things that are going to happen. So it looks like at this point, we're kind of, we've got a group that was actually working on it this morning. I don't have all their details yet, but one will be those just coordinating with the principal locally, their parents and others putting to work, whether with, with specific teachers or in the library. You saw some of those pictures of books and stuff. That's just going to take a lot of hands. But along with that, the other organizations, we've been working with Emergency Operations Center for the Muni, they have a volunteer system. Georgia McCallis filled us in, to where they have those clubs and organizations, volunteers that are already been vetted through their, through their folks and are sometimes very much ready to go. So we are going to have, we'll have a couple of our folks here centrally also working with those and working through and with the EOC on that. So very happy that there's already a structure in place and that we can coordinate with them as they are, as they are getting those same requests, that they can let us know and we will be working with our principals to come out with who needs what where. Some of our buildings are, may not need nearly as much as some of our others, as I think you got that feeling of. So we're going to be, we're going to work through that as well as then just the local volunteers within those classrooms. But that, again, that probably, we won't have anybody coming in until that second day with teachers. It gives that first day for them to meet, to do that assessment of their classrooms, what's in it, what's, what they need, and quite frankly, what they need help with. And the principals can get that together. So we know that the community is, is rallying around. We've heard that loud and clear and look forward to having that help.
Okay. I'm going to have, Andy has a question and then Ms. Mitchell.
Yes, thank you. The question I had is the inspections that are being done for structure and everything. Is that being done by engineers at this point? Is it our maintenance department? I guess the, the question is the level of inspection. And if it's something that's being done relatively quickly now, do we have a plan for really looking at things in the long term, on a deeper level later as we have time?
Through, through the President to, to Member Holloman, I'll, I'll take this in step. So with regards to the, the organization of how, how we're inspecting or interrogating buildings, we, we have formed teams that are inclusive of our own maintenance and capital planning staff with, with our contractors. We're working with Roger Hickel, E. Clutna, and Cornerstone. And it's Middleton that is providing our structural engineers. Because of the numbers of structural engineers that we have, we have fewer structural engineers than we have these teams, frankly, that are going around to inspect our schools. So to, to get back to the triage piece, those schools that, that were identified as, as an assessment of the building, and again, that's kind of, kind of our critical path here in the near term. Or you have yet to see, you know, the, the recovery and repair will not happen here in the near term. I mean, we're in the middle of the winter. From a project planning and execution standpoint, you know, our, our construction window starts in May and, you know, lasts through September into October. So we, we anticipate there will be some of that need where, you know, projects will happen now or not happen now that will get to them. If we can develop alternative means to make schools safe and functional, we will look to do that. But, but the long term again is to get our schools back to where they were on Friday.
Ms. Mitchell was next. Mr. Foster and then you. Well, I want to give members a chance that haven't spoken to speak.
So I'd like to reiterate what everybody says. Friday was phenomenal. I mean, being at schools, picking up my children, and it was incredible. I'm so proud of the staff, the students, the administration, the community. It was, it was incredible. I mean, it just, it could not have been any better. I'm curious, just a couple of details. You talked about, Dr. Stock, you talked about six elementary schools are green, five schools are amber, three are red. Are those the, let me kind of go over everything, but are those the ones that you immediately have assessed? Because that's only 14 schools so far. Are those all elementary? And in terms of the volunteer piece, Mr. Graham, you talked about when, maybe the second day after the teachers are let back in, do we know when that's going to be? Because I have so many people asking me. And, you know, I think, obviously, I think we all understand the benefit of healing as a community, to have people be able to help. It's our natural human instinct to want to do that. You know, and I think people are, I mean, as of Friday, my husband, my daughter and I would have been happy to go anywhere and start picking up trash and wiping, you know, mopping the floors or whatever is needed, wiping furniture down, re-shelding books, all of that kind of stuff. I think people are willing to do whatever is needed. And so I'd love to be able to tell people as they ask me what we think the timeline is going to be on that.
So there's two different questions. The one on the specific schools of the colors, we'll let Tom do that. And then Dr. Stock can speak to the instructional side and, and so if you want to.
Sure. Thank, thank you. To, to Member Mitchell's question. So with regards to the, you, you've, you've indicated 14 buildings have, have had this determination. So again, every school has been entered. And again, as of this morning, I'm sure this number's increased, we had 64 schools where we've had teams go into these schools for the evaluation. But, but the evaluation before we, we publish or notify what we think that condition of the building is, we got to get all that feedback. So that, that, that compilation of, of information from all these different inputs is, is really what is the, the, the time implication. And I would, I would submit to you again, over, you know, here in the next several hours and into the next couple of days, you know, we will be, will be able to provide an evaluation of every single school. I mean, and, and I understand that there is, you know, an imperative, an interest to get this information. But by the same token, I want to make sure that what we're doing is deliberate and thorough. So I don't, I don't want people to, to just pencil whip inspections. I want to make sure that they have the time to do what they need to do. And again, I think they all, they all understand that, you know, our mission is to get back into educating kids. So they, there's, there's no lack of any sense of urgency. It's just being detailed.
And I, I just want you to know, I'm not being critical in any way. I just didn't understand because you had talked about being in 64, if the other ones just hadn't been categorized yet or, so thank you for that explanation.
I think all the pieces aren't together yet.
So to answer the question a little bit about volunteers, maybe I'll just say, I like to take a general stab at the question the board member asked about, how can you help? Like what, how could a board help us? And one of the things that happens in these things has been my experience is you're going to get, you've already been inundated with thousands of questions. And, and it's just frustrating because there's no way that you can receive enough communication for us to be able to answer every one of those questions. So one of the ways I think you can help is just to respond with some general confidence that the staff is working on it. You've been briefed on all these meetings. You know that these things are all working on. We're doing it. They're on it. Communication will be forthcoming. If it's a staff member, I mean, they can, they're going to get direct communication from their principal and their directors that, that they work under because those people, as these schools go from red to yellow to green, that information trickles to that principal who puts out to the staff, "We, we've been labeled safe to be here. Here's the plan." And that's what they're working on tomorrow in detail with the principals. So I think you can really help us a lot with even just the community giving you the grace to know that you're not going to know the answer to every one of those questions and that they're going to be, the staff is working on it. So that, that's one thing. The volunteer piece, the way it's set up, it's on a three-day staggered piece. So the first step is this principal's meeting tomorrow at 11:00. They'll be briefed and then elementary and secondary are going to work through all these details, including volunteers and the team that's upstairs working on procedures for volunteers and things now. They'll have more detail for the principals tomorrow. But the first day when a school is released to be green, the principal will let their community know, their staff, that at that point, there's the first step is that retrieval. If they have any item they left, it's optional. They don't have to come in, but they could come in and retrieve something if they wish. And so there's that. The second day, of course, is the staff's return to work where there's that assessment made. The third day is where volunteer pieces work. So after the full day of that, the third day is the day. And that'll be a different day for each school as they become green and notified it's safe. So you could let the, you know, people who ask you know that it's a staggered process and they're going to hear from their principals directly on that.
But it could be as early as Tuesday.
It could be as early as Wednesday. So Monday, the, the principal's meeting. Tuesday, the retrieval day. Wednesday would be the earliest day any school. And that would only be if they've heard from their principal.
Yeah, that'd be, Wednesday would be the first day that, that the staff comes in as a work day.
Yeah.
Which would actually mean the first possible day for volunteers on, if best-case scenario would be Thursday.
Thursday, correct. That's right.
Well, and I would say too that as board members, we need to be cognizant too that that can change and that we need, we don't want people inundating the principal with calls and that sort of thing too, that it's best to wait for that communication. Mr. Foster.
I'd like to follow up on Mr. Roth's discussion regarding the structural integrity inspections and encourage him to consider that I've been contacted by a fair number of structural engineers, having been an engineer in my prior life, who are ready, willing, and able to assist. And I think there's a community there that is very interested in helping us expedite the safe return of the students to our facilities and want to encourage us to take advantage of that community outreach opportunity. Thank you.
Ms. Snelling?
Just two quick things. And most of you know I have three kids at three different levels. But one of the communications that I've been receiving, Chugiat Principal has been really good at sending out updates. And one of the things that she sent out on Friday was the parent guidelines for helping children after an earthquake. And I've only seen that from one of the principals. So I know that I've read it multiple times. And so I want to ask, what are plans, if any, for helping children come back to schools? You know, when they do open up and what supports they might need?
Yeah, thanks. That item, I think it's great. She said that already. That's one of the things we'll be covering with principals tomorrow when we meet with them. Our school sites have already got some materials and things together. So in that case, that whole socio-emotional piece and dealing with these issues is one of the things we know schools are going to have to have. That can be traumatic for kids, depending what they've gone through or even re-entering back into that. So some of the things they will be planning and talking about, actually not just for kids, but for our staff as well. One of the first things they've talked about when we meet with, with, with the faculty is, "Let's kind of talk about this and see what our, our needs are." And again, some of those, some of those buildings were pretty horrific as far as what they, what they came out of. So when they, as they re-enter in, looking at, yes, that is one of the things that's on the agenda. Appreciate you saying that. We haven't talked about that. But certainly it's one of the things the directors are planning to talk with their principals tomorrow so the principals can in turn work with their staffs and, and get information out to parents as well. So thanks.
Thank you. And then the other one was Council of Great City Schools. I believe Michael Casserly has already reached out to you, Dr. Feldman as well, offering any sort of supports from any of the member districts. And whether it's sending people up to help or it's sending supplies, you know, for kids, I And whether it's sending people up to help, or it's sending supplies, you know, for kids, I see a lot of, you know, wet binders and, you know, stuff like that. And so any sort of things like that, I know that, um, they would love to help. They've helped, you know, other districts with hurricanes and stuff like that, and so they'd love to be able to reciprocate in any way.
Great, that's good. Mr. Donnelly.
I know it's difficult, but I'd appreciate a discussion of the merits of, of when to release information about what schools have been classified as red. I understand the position in wanting to have full information available to the public, and I also understand the difficulties with, um, fielding a tremendous number of inquiries of concerns, folks. But I also think that it merits a full public policy analysis of the timing of that. Because I certainly want to provide all the information we can absolutely provide to the public.
Um, I, I, I agree that, um, when we have the information, we need to, uh, have it available. The situation now isn't that, um, we don't know, we don't know the extent of what red is. Is red that it's gonna take two weeks? Or is it that a building can't get in there, um, for two months? Or never? We, we, we don't know. And so, um, our goal is to get solid information, finish these structural assessments, 'cause it's a, they, they are in layers of expertise, and we're bringing, um, you know, the initial visual, then our folks, and it goes to a higher level. And so today isn't the day, but early in this week it will be. Uh, we are still, we haven't even, um, been into all schools yet. And so, um, I just wanna share with the board, the first question is, you know, a, a school is in, is red-tagged, well, how long? I wanna be able to say, we look that the work on this and, um, that needs to be done, ready for kids, is short-term or long-term? Just some simple questions we haven't even, uh, been able to assess yet, because the final reports aren't made. And so, again, it isn't about holding information back, it's just having the complete file of information, and the pieces aren't back yet. So, um, what, what is the, the board's preference, um, when we do have the information? Perhaps we start there. Ms. Nellie. Uh, Hildy.
Oh, sorry.
Um, I, I think you have, uh, outlined a very prudent plan. You know, parents this week are focused on getting childcare for their kids, frankly, because we've shared that nobody's going to be in class this week. Um, so, you know, I, I don't think there's any urgency in sharing inaccurate information. There's plenty of things to work on right now, and, and I appreciate your wanting to, if, if there's a school that can't open on the tenth, um, you know, we don't have to know that today. We can know it when we have a better idea of what, um, the extent of that is gonna be. So I, I'm fine with that.
So I, I would just add that, um, even if we don't have that information, I think we can still let them know that when schools do open up, that all children will be going to school somewhere. Yeah.
Madam President, that's a good point. So whether it's in my facility that I originally go to, or a new one, uh, school will be December tenth for our students. That's a, a, a good point. Mr. Stock, I'm sorry. And again, I, I just wanna say, hundreds of people are out there working right now, getting this information. And our, um, announcement of this meeting occurred Friday without the scope of, you know, boots on the ground on Saturday, when we actually got a, a bigger scope, 'cause really, it was safety of people, shut down the systems. Now it's in the assessment part. So thanks. Mr. Stock.
Yeah, I was just going to, for the board, just to, for us to be cautious about, you know, our goal would be to do that until we know if there is a school, you know, what we have to do is, we've started the process of looking at alternatives. So there's, this district has some protocols in the history of its past of doing some unique things with double shifting and other kinds of strategies they've used. So we need to explore all those, uh, and basic, on which school for what time, and those haven't been fully vetted. So I mean, saying that, you know, I just want us to, to know, I'm not gonna guarantee, we can't guarantee that every school's gonna open on Monday unless it's, um, through correspondence and others, other things that we can do, and those will have to be vetted out, you know, in other ways. But, uh, that's our goal. I just want us to be careful that we know that if we do, it's gonna have, there's gonna be multiple methods to do that, and we haven't fully vetted those.
Perhaps a better question is, learning is going to resume. So whether that learning is happening in a set classroom, um, or other modalities, we're, we're going to have a plan for the education of our children.
I, I think that's a good message. Any other questions by the board? Well, I just wanna say I was here Friday, and, um, wow. It was, everybody knew exactly what they were doing. Everybody was doing what they needed to do. I heard from a parent at Central Middle School that said she couldn't get to her daughter right away, her daughter was very scared. She went to pick her up, the staff was professional, calm. Uh, she felt that her daughter, even if she hadn't gotten there when she did, that the staff was comforting and that her daughter was safe. And you can't ask for more than that. I will say that I did see one of the classrooms, and it was very emotional to think that our students survived that, um, that our students know, I mean, exactly what to do. I mean, thank, thank goodness. But it was emotional to know that, um, we kept almost forty-eight thousand students safe and, and staff. And I cannot say enough how much I appreciate the people in this building, our staff, the maintenance people, everybody that's working around the clock, uh, TAs, um, BPO, I mean, just everyone. This was a joint effort, and it's to your and their testament that we do have, and our students, I heard stories about our students giving their coats to other students, teachers giving their coats to students. It is truly, um, a testament to everyone in ASD, and thank you. Yes?
I, I, I wanna say, uh, just in closing, just how, how deep that goes, because, um, there was a, a group of people for middle schools meeting here, um, because of the contract and, and figuring things out. And so a lot of, uh, administrators at the time of the actual quake, they were within, back to their buildings right away, released. But at the time of the quake, um, we have set in plans for who's next in charge. I mean, there, there wasn't any question about what to do. And so it, it really does take, um, a system, and, and we have, uh, great people, and, and I, I'm fortunate for my team, but I'm also fortunate for the leadership, and, uh, it's a good thing to be a member of ASD. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments by board members or anyone else? Okay, then we're going to, did you have one?
May I, um, may I summarize? If there are, um, uh, individual questions from, uh, that someone had mentioned today, similar to our processes already, please reach out to them. If it's new information, um, I request that, uh, board, your policy is followed, uh, please CC Katie and the board president, and, and that, um, if there's communication by the board, uh, if we could be, um, with the media, if, uh, we could be notified of that, uh, and that will assist us in our, our planning as well. Thank you. We're adjourned, then.